I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bitter.
Aye.
Dr. Steger.
Aye.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber, does anyone have any comments on the minutes, any corrections? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter.
Aye.
Dr. Steger.
Aye.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye. Minutes pass. Good evening. As we begin tonight, I want to make it clear to the public that no formal vote on the revisions to policy EBEA, use of face coverings will be made tonight. This discussion is not around whether masks are effective or whether the timing of changing the mask mandate was not proper. This discussion is based on policy EBEA and who has the authority to make changes to our district policy. The Board of Education governs through policy. Board Policy BF, Board Policy Development states that proposals for a new policy or the amendment or repeal of existing policy will be submitted in writing to the superintendent for submission to the board. Readings at two separate meetings will normally be required before a new policy or policy amendment is adopted. Action to adopt will take place at a subsequent or third meeting of the board. The board does have the option of voting for, excuse me, the board does have the option of voting for adoption at a second meeting. Two board members have proposed a modification to EBEA, which will be discussed and read tonight. Per policy BF, a second reading will take place next Wednesday, February 16th, at our regularly scheduled meeting. And a third reading and a vote will take place March 2nd. Tonight, we will have public participation for anyone who wishes to address the board concerning policy EBEA. Mrs. Weber, I ask that you read the proposed change to policy EBEA.
Thank you, Mr. Ballant. Just a couple notes this evening. We do have, those of you who are attending the meeting, both here in person this evening, as well as I believe we do have some people who are attending virtually. We do have copies of the agenda and as well as the revised policy here available for those of you who are attending in person. For those of you who are attending virtually, or if you'd like to review the policy later on, as well as review any of the board meeting, we are recording the meeting so it can be posted later on. As Mr. Ballant noted, we will have a time for public comment regarding policy EBEA after the board's discussion. For those of you who are attending virtually, if you want to address the board at that time, you can do so by sending an email to me as tonight's moderator. My email address is webberb@sycamoreschools.org. Mr. Ray, if you can just move on to the next slide for me, please. Okay, for those of you who are attending in virtually, or for those of you who are here who'd like to look at the policy later on, on our Board of Education page, we do have a tab with the current facial covering policy. This is just a snapshot of that part of the page, but if you scroll down, you can also, for those of you who aren't here this evening to have it in front of you, you can look at the policy online, so, and see the revisions as marked. So, Mr. Ballant, do you want me to read the policy in its entirety? Or just the, potentially, the general provisions section?
Just the general provisions section.
Okay, thank you. Under general provisions of policy EBEA, it reads as follows, "This policy shall supersede any conflicting provisions and other district policies, handbooks, or procedures. The board authorizes the superintendent to amend these requirements as necessary to meet federal and state guidelines." Within the old policy and this portion of the policy is struck out as part of the proposed revision. And that says, "All decisions made by the superintendent pursuant to this policy shall be final." In its place, is the following is proposed that would be added to the policy. "All decisions made by the superintendent pursuant to this policy shall be final, comma, provided however, that the superintendent's exercise of this policy remains subject to the control of the Board of Education."
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. As Mrs. Weber stated, the board will have a discussion first, and then we will have any public participation following that. Thank you. Mrs. Bitter and Dr. Steger.
Thank you. Thank you for joining our meeting this evening. Dr. Steger and I requested this special meeting to discuss with the board our district's face covering policy. Can you put up our slides, please?
Excuse me, but before you go on, Mrs. Bitter, I have not seen these slides that are being presented. And we have a, we typically get to see what is being presented before they are actually put on our screen. So can you explain what's going on?
Sure, we put up the mission statement and the vision statement. We can just, we cannot put, if I didn't, we didn't know that policy that we had to.
No, I didn't say it was a policy. It is our practice that we actually get to see what is going to be up on the screen before our meeting.
We reached out to the ethics lawyer at the Ohio School Board Association, and they told us if we shared it with another member of the board, it would be considered a meeting. We were told specifically not to share it. Mr. Ballant.
You know, I can't say what, I can't discount what the ethics lawyer I said, I said. I think it's, I think it's very disrespectful to the rest of the board.
Okay, we won't, we won't share it then. That's fine. That's fine. We don't need to share it. It's no problem.
And I just asked how you would feel if the administration or other board members had a presentation prepared that was not first shared with them.
Okay, we won't share it then. But we are not allowed to have a conversation with you because there's two of us. If we had one more person to that, it's considered a public meeting. So how should we proceed?
It's not a conversation. It's sending an email like we do with all of our board minutes and meetings.
Okay.
We send out presentations that we will be reviewing in the public meeting.
Okay, next, we.
I know you guys have only been at two, two meetings as board members, but you could have called Mrs. Weber, Mr. Lewis, or Mr. Ballant to ask that question.
We won't present the slides. Thank you for joining our meeting this evening. Dr. Steger and I requested this special meeting to discuss with the board our district's face coverings policy. The policy which was adapted last fall authorizes the superintendent to require face coverings under certain circumstances. The decision is in the superintendent's discretion, and the policy provides that his decisions are final. The board also adopted some guidelines for the superintendent. We called this meeting because we believe that the board needs to be more involved in these decisions. The board is the governing body of our school district. If we had not delegated our authority to the superintendent, it would be the board's role to make these decisions. We agree with the policy in that it permits the superintendent to act more promptly than the board could if numbers rise rapidly. But we believe that we need to revise the policy so that the board, as the governing body of our district, can weigh the risk and possible impacts on all of our students and staff when these decisions are made. We want to consider every child in our district. This includes unvaccinated students, students living with disabilities, students living with special healthcare needs, chronic health conditions, and our district's economically disadvantaged and vulnerable populations. It is important that all of our families and staff are able to understand our criteria for making decisions. And that our process and the steps we take each week are transparent. Given the current wording, the superintendent's decisions are final. The board's involvement in these decisions is therefore limited. This policy has a major impact on the lives of many of our district's students, their families, and staff. We therefore believe it would be appropriate and necessary to add the, add to the policy that the superintendent's exercise of policy remains subject to the control of the board. Dr. Steger and I understand that the board is a governing body. We, as board members, individually cannot act on behalf of the district or make any decision. Every action requires approval by a majority of the board. We respect this process and the decisions that the board will make regarding masks, even if we may not always agree with them. This is how the, this is how the process works. The process of revising board policies requires at least two readings. Today is the first reading of the proposed policy revision. We are requesting a second reading take class at the next regular board meeting this coming Wednesday. Once adopted, the board can vote on a face covering requirement. If the authority had not been delegated to the superintendent, we would have requested a vote on an extension of face coverings. Dr. Steger and I will present why we believe that that's appropriate. On January 13th, 2022, the CDC Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recommended universal mask, indoor masking by all students ages two years and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K to 12 schools regardless of vaccination status. Two days ago, on February 8th, 2022, the CDC director reaffirmed this guidance. She said, "We have and continue to recommend masking in areas of high and substantial transmission that is essentially everywhere in the country in public indoor settings." The Ohio Department of Health advised schools on January 26th, 2022, that, quote, "Universal masking reduces our policies, reduces risk of spread. The more students who are wearing masks, the less the virus can spread. This reduces risk." On December 28th, 2021, at the request of Governor DeWine's administration, a letter was sent from the Ohio Hospital Association and the Children's Hospital Association, and was signed by the CEOs of Ohio's six children's hospitals, asking all school superintendents, administrators, and school board members to require universal masking. The hospital stated in their letter that masks work and are effective at slowing the spread of this virus. The best way to keep kids in school is to slow the spread of the virus. The best ways to slow the spread of the virus are to get vaccinated and wear a mask. While it appears, and we are all extremely hopeful that we may be entering into a new phase of this pandemic, we do not yet know what the future holds with this virus. We may experience more ups and downs, more variants and more waves. As new board members, Mrs. Bitter and I have requested this special meeting this evening to speak with all of you, our fellow board members, for the purpose of discussing how we move forward with our decisions on this policy. We want to make sure that our decisions are in alignment with our district's mission, vision, and value statements, and that we are considering the impact of all students, including vulnerable populations. The reason we wear masks is to help prevent or protect the people around us. Masking indoors, especially during times of high community spread, impacts in particular our vulnerable populations. Masking helps keep kids in school. It helps students be more included. It helps them have better access to their education. It helps them be a part of their school community. Conversely, when school communities do not mask during these times, some students may have no other choice but to do remote or virtual learning, take part in homebound instruction, attend different schools, or be placed in more restrictive or segregated educational settings within their own school buildings. Here are some of the vulnerable groups in particular that we need to consider when we make these decisions. Children with developmental disabilities like Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy, and autism are heavily impacted by masking policies as they are often unable to mask consistently. Quote, "Having a developmental or intellectual disability is the highest independent risk factor for contracting COVID-19, controlling for race, ethnicity, and other variables. People with intellectual disabilities are six times more likely to die from COVID-19 than other members of the population." That is from the Association of American Medical Colleges. And two, children with special healthcare needs. Another group that is impacted by school masking policies are children with special healthcare needs. According to the National Survey of Children's Health, about 19% of children ages zero to 17 have a special healthcare need. Children with special healthcare needs include children who have chronic health conditions, developmental disabilities, diabetes, and asthma. One in four homes have one or more children living with a special healthcare need. These are sourced from both the Health Resources and Services Administration and the Kaiser Family Foundation. In conclusion, in our view, the board should have, should have a say in the decision to no longer require face mask, face coverings. We need to better understand how such a decision that has a significant impact on our student population and community is made. We, in our role as board members, have a responsibility towards all of our students. That includes the 20% of children living with a special healthcare need. That includes all of our students with developmental or intellectual disabilities, as well as all of our students living in poverty, all of which, who have been disproportionately affected by this pandemic. If we want to ensure the best learning environment for all of our children, we want to ensure an inclusive environment, then the board needs to be involved on when and how these decisions are made. Now, after, after a second reading next Wednesday, the board does agree that the policy should be amended as, as we have proposed, we will have the, the ability and the opportunity to reinstate the requirement. However, we as a board would need to decide that, and to decide if reinstating the policy is even sensible at this point in time. Too much time will have passed. We requested this meeting the week, the week the face covering requirement was removed. We will not be able to vote until next week at the earliest, almost two weeks after the decision was announced. It is likely too late to change course at this point. And I can only imagine how it must be for our younger students, some of which have never gone to school without a mask until last week, to suddenly be required to put them on again. But it is important to remember, this pandemic is not over. So in our view, it is appropriate and necessary for the board to be more involved in these decisions and to not fully delegate our role in this. To achieve that, the policy needs to be amended as proposed. We appreciate your attention. We thank the board president and for the administration for all the work that you have done to prepare for this meeting. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Bitter and Dr. Stegers, you know, I have, I do have some questions just about the way the policy is written. You know, I don't understand how a board either delegates, doesn't fully delegate, you know, a board. If we have input on the process, process, it has to be in a public meeting per Ohio Sunshine Law. So to say a superintendent has a final decision, as long as it's, as long as, what's the exact wording? As long as it's subject to the control of the Board of Education, before any decision would be made, there would have to be a board meeting to discuss whether you put a mask on or you take a mask off. So that's the way I read this policy. So can you help me understand? Because I don't feel that this is a very clear policy.
I'm not, I'm not 100% sure what we're allowed to say in this board meeting, but we consulted with our attorney on this exact question.
So your understanding of the way you have proposed is that the board must meet to approve the superintendent's use of a mask, either putting on or taking off?
The way that it stands right now, we may not have any authority at all to be part of the decision-making process regarding the subject matter.
I understand that part of the way it stands today.
Okay.
I'm talking about what you're proposing, that the superintendent would make a decision, we would call a board meeting to approve his decision?
He, that would not be necessary if we were not in a, if we did not need, let's say we were in a moment where we were not wearing masks, and suddenly the number spiked. It would not be necessary that we would be involved. He has the authority to quickly put masks on the children. But, but reverse that. If he's going to, let's say we're in a period of high spread, and things are not going well, and numbers are pretty high, we would have input as to whether those masks would be coming off.
So.
That is the, that's a distinction.
But it's not clear to me when we would have input and when we would not have input. That's the part I don't understand.
The reason we asked for this meeting today is because we believe that we have a duty of care. We don't believe it. We know we have a duty of care.
I understand, I understand that part.
To make informed decisions. And we have to be able, as board members, we have to be able to make sure that our policies are living up to our vision and our mission. And that is why we're holding this meeting, to have this discussion. We cannot have this discussion any other way except right here in public.
I completely understand that part, but I still don't understand the differential about when the superintendent can act on their own and when they need board approval. Because that's.
Are you talking about other policies or about this policy?
Right here, that says, pursuant to this policy, the decision of the superintendent shall be final, provided however, that the superintendent's exercise of this policy remains subject to the control of the Board of Education.
Because that would mean that when we ask questions about how will this impact a student, the student population, the 20% of students who have special healthcare needs, when we ask that question, we will get answers. That's the difference.
No, I, maybe I'm not being clear. Let's say that this, 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 you know, to, this past, this, this policy passes, EBEA, with the changes. Three days after it passes, the numbers go out of control and spike. We would have to hold a board meeting because it says right here, subject to control of the Board of Education, we would have to hold a board meeting.
No, we would not, we would not have to. It just says that we, it is subject to that. Meaning, if he didn't put masks on, then we could intervene. But if he wants to put mask on because he realizes that it's the time to put mask on, there's nothing that stops him from doing that.
But I might respectfully submit that the default policy is optional mask wearing, and that only if the federal government, the state government, the local government, or the superintendent take action, would masking be required. So the way I interpret them, the policy is, the action that the superintendent can take is to require masks. The inaction of the superintendent to require them, I think actually the board would have to meet to put masks on. And I actually think, to be complete, the way you have written this, the board would have to meet to take masks off as well. That's my interpretation, because the default policy is optional mask wearing, if you look at the language.
We, as a board, consulted legal counsel on this exact question.
I can read the provision just for the public. "In the absence of face covering requirement enacted by the superintendent, federal, state, or local authorities, students, employees, contractors, volunteers, and visitors may voluntarily wear face coverings while on school grounds or while on school-provided transportation." That's the governing policy. So the absence of a direction from the superintendent implies that face coverings are not required.
I think that's correct. I don't think, though, we're not arguing with that. We're just trying to say that if face coverings are not being instituted during a time of high spread, does our board have any ability to protect students? And the answer is no, we do not.
Mrs. Bitter, I don't understand when you say the board does not have any ability to protect students. You need to elaborate or define what you're talking about.
That is the, the, what I just read. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I respectfully disagree.
Current policy is written, it makes it clear that the board has no input. So every week, the board is currently, like, general population in our district, waiting for a superintendent decision. In high spread and low spread, it's been week to week. We have no control, no power, no whatever word you want to use to describe it. This would at least allow us to understand the process that goes into, rather than just in-school transmission, other things that are included in the guidelines that were laid out that have not been included in any of our updates or any of our decision-making process.
I don't, you know, I'm not going to disagree that the board should look at updating guidelines, updating recommendations. I have no issues if, if that's what we're discussing here, is making transparent and discussing what some of these guidelines should be. You know, that is definitely something that we can ask the superintendent and administration to come back to us with. Because it's what we're saying here, is there's still no guidelines for the board. It's just.
We can, we can get a policy written that does what we needed to do, which is, gives us the ability to ask questions, be informed, make informed decisions, and actually fulfill our duty of care. And the superintendent be able to put, the purpose of this was to have superintendent have the ability, when incredibly high transmission occurs, to quickly put mask on. Of course, that's what we would want a superintendent to do. Of course, we want that. But we, as a board, we're living in the middle of a pandemic. It's been six months, and we've had two different variants, two completely different variants. We will have more of them. And certain people in this district are impacted by that disproportionately. They are negatively impacted by the masking policy. I'm talking about healthcare. I'm talking about education. I'm talking about getting included, being able to come to our physical schools. We have to be able to have that question and ask questions. Just even to ask the question is important for the board. We cannot even ask that question. And I am one of those people that's not able to ask those questions. Not every single member of this board is able to have that question, those questions answered.
I'm sorry, in public meetings, you are able to ask any question you so choose about our healthy, during our health updates update, and you can ask any question you want. So I'm a little confused when you say that you're not, you can't ask the question, you can't have the discussion, you don't know who to go to to get these answers. I'm a little confused because as a board member who's been serving in this district for, this is my seventh year, and living through the last two years and, and helping to lead this district through, I'm a little taken aback by, by both of you saying that you haven't, you can't ask questions. I mean, if anyone has, has participated in our board meetings as a public citizen, as a board member, we always say, "Do you have any questions? Is there anything else that you want to ask?" So I'm a little confused as to, as you saying that you don't have that ability.
We have the ability to ask questions. We would like the answers, though.
But you have received answers.
I still have not received answers from Exhibit A, other than for two areas in Exhibit A for the threshold data. Exhibit A is the guidance that was passed on September 22nd by this board to give guidance for the superintendent to follow, just for reference. I'm sure most of you know that already, but.
So this, you know, again, this meeting is about who has authority. And I'm just going to restate, I do not feel that this policy is written clearly.
Are you saying?
Revision, the revision to the policy is clear.
Do you feel that the board should have, be able to weigh in on the decision, to be able to ask questions, to be able to get answers, not just ask questions, but actually get the information that's being asked? Or is it completely in the sole discretion of the superintendent, and we have absolutely no ability to make, weigh in on this?
I certainly believe you should have the ability to ask questions and get answers, and I feel that you have done that, and you have gotten answers. So.
I respectfully disagree.
Mr. Ballant, if I may, I, I just, my question would be if, if there are unanswered questions, because I am not aware of any questions around the guidelines that have been asked. I've not, not, I've not received any emails or direction from the board about unanswered questions. I've participated in all the meetings, and I'm not aware of any additional questions that not have been answered by myself or the team. So I, I'm very concerned if there are unanswered questions. We're happy to take in any questions that any board member might have and get answers, but sitting in a public meeting, if we're not prepared. sitting in a public meeting, if we're not prepared or not aware of what the answer, or the questions might be, I don't know that we always have the answers at our fingertips, but we certainly pride ourselves on getting back with all board members and making sure that every board member has information that they can feel confident in whatever that we're voting on. So I am a little concerned that if there are unanswered questions, I am happy to take those in and meet with my team and get answers back to any board members that would have unanswered questions. But I understand that that may not be the subject matter for tonight. But if there are questions that have been unanswered, yeah, I'm happy to take those in and work with my team to get responses to those. Thank you.
With the Healthy Aves updates, we've seen this from your Exhibit A, decision-making thresholds is what we're supposed to be following. You've done a great job with the core ZIP code data, although it does leave out some of our less affluent areas in the district and the in-school transmission data, but we still need to have, and I shouldn't have to search for it myself, the percent positivity cases in the state, new cases per one hundred thousand per day. I got the vaccination rate one, thank you, because I just came in, and the CDC level of community transmission map on there also is, the questions on there, can the community figure out how this is computed? The answer is, I think, no, because I don't think anyone knows this exists. Is the number transparent? I would say no, because I don't think they know this exists. And how does it match up with the CDC guidance? The answer is, we're in very high risk right now, so it doesn't match up with CDC guidance.
And again, i- if you would read Exhibit A in, in its entirety, it does talk about the board revisiting Exhibit A after vaccines are available for five through eleven. So I do, you know, I, I do agree that this is a great exercise and to send back to the administration to review the guidelines and bring it back to the board at a future meeting and have a board discussion about the guidelines. But that, that is not the, the intent of this meeting. The intent is, of this meeting is who has the authority per policy EBEA to make decisions.
I would just also like to say that the fact that we had to call this special meeting just to have this discussion, I think does show you that this policy does not work as it's intended. If that's what you're saying, it's intended to work like this.
I would argue that this was not necessary to be an emergency meeting. We actually have a regularly scheduled board meeting next Wednesday. So I would just like to say that, Mr. Lewis, I support you in continuing to make decisions regarding the safety of our students and staff. The process of reviewing local data and reacting to local data, not predicting data, has served us well for the past months of the pandemic. In fact, just a few weeks ago, Mr. Lewis made the decision to mask all students in grade seven through twelve, reacting to the data of a higher rise in our area. Again, reacting to data, not predicting it. The proposed change to the policy is both unnecessarily unnecessary and frankly uninformed. Given the fact that this policy has been effective for our district, I see no reason to change it.
Any additional comments or questions from the board?
My one question would be, are you comfortable with the possibility of the board being sued for not having any oversight?
Dr. Seeger, this policy was reviewed by our legal counsel when it was put in place. So I would defer that question to our legal counsel. I am not a school board, board attorney, so I would just defer that question.
I just have maybe one other comment. I think this is about authority. But I do think it's important that we act as a, a team, a board that respects each other, even when we have differences of opinion. It's really important to me that we treat each other with respect and trust. And I'm hopeful that we can continue forward in that avenue. I don't, I don't take the, the request to meet as any sign that other than we want to have a good dialogue. So I'm open-minded to having a dialogue. I will say that the reason the policy that we have in place, BF, takes three readings generally to vote, with an exception at two, is to allow us to consider any revisions reflect, reflectively. So it's important to me that we have time to hear from the community and we have time to reflect and think about the policy changes. We shouldn't be governing on an immediate basis through policy. Policy should stand the test of time. And so this is one of those things where I think it's important to not to react too quickly to policy. And I, I'll actually appreciate the fact that we have the policymaking guideline that has the multiple readings. As far as the trust and respect, we have to have trust and respect amongst the five board members to be an effective board. We also need to have trust and respect for our administration to be an effective school district. And so I think it's really important that we keep those things in mind when we take action or have discussions. And I, I want to say just kind of a final comment, Mr. Lewis. I have greatly appreciated how you've navigated us as a district through these very trying times. I have no hesitation. I trust you when it's time to take a decision to close the schools for inclement weather for the safety of our children. We don't call a board meeting to do that. I trust you with the health and safety. I know you think about every child when you make a decision. And I just want you to know, while I cannot speak for the whole board, I can speak for myself, that I really have appreciated your leadership through this pandemic.
Any additional comments from the board before we move to public comments? So we will have the opportunity for public comments and then the board will have opportunity to complete our discussion. I know we have a couple of people that have requested public participation. I remind people, perk policy, KDKDP, public participation at a board meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes to address one topic item. No more than fifteen minutes will be devoted to any topic unless the majority of the board votes to continue discussions. So once we reach, reach the fifteen-minute time limit, I will ask the board if they would like to continue. And then assuming that they do, we will continue with public discussion. I do ask and remind each speaker in the audience to be respectful and hold any audience comments or apply applause. Mrs. Weber, do you have?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ballin. I, I have one participant who asked specifically to address the board on policy EBEA. I do have a second public participation form regarding a petition at Green, and that I'm not sure applies to tonight's topic. However, if it is something that, it, it may be something that we would just have to defer to the next meeting if it's not about EBEA. So we may need some additional clarification on that. But we can start out with the one request that I received via policy EBEA. And that's Kelly Drodowski. You would like to address the board and, and Mr. Drodowski, before we begin, I just want to make sure, if you maybe just do a test to make sure that
Hello, hello, hello.
Okay. All right.
Hello?
Okay.
Is that good?
Remember you have three minutes and Mrs. Wagner will be timing you and will let you know when your time is up.
All right. Thank you very much. My recent and new friend, Bill Lavery, during the election said, you know the old Harry Truman saying, if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. Well, that's what all of them did. He also quoted you guys at calling you the Board of Abdication. While I don't agree with those two things, they were said after the power was voted to give Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Lewis, the power to change our facial covering policy. I don't see it that way, but the power given to Mr. Lewis, in my opinion, and from what I've read, was never permanent. Our community remains divided on many fronts. I think based on the seating tonight, as you can see, both we unmasked and masked, we are divided. And we don't want to be, I know I don't want to be anymore, but I think that we all agreed back in August that the power should not be with Mr. Lewis forever. The reason for it was for an urgent change, but that policy, or that purpose is now moot as hopefully we're getting to a point where we can consider lifting the mandate of facial coverings. I have great respect for Mr. Lewis. I know I'm not always the easiest parent to have in your district, but I do appreciate his willingness to make decisions quickly and know that they were not easy on him. However, I do no longer agree that he should be the sole owner of this power. No matter who the decider is, I would request a more thoughtful approach to lifting the mask mandate completely, including waiting until all aviators, including young and future aviators, who are not vaccinated and eligible quite yet. After all, they are part of the Sycamore community as well. It has been proven masks work. There is enough data to show that to be true. Otherwise, no mandate would have ever been instituted, even if partially. There is enough data to reflect masks play a major role in reducing the cases the previous two weeks, and I'm very grateful for that. I implore each of you to listen to that data, protect the aviators who are not eligible for the vaccines yet, and roll out a tiered and strategic approach to lifting the mandate when the time is right. For example, when the numbers are lower than six hundred and sixty-one and five hundred and eighty-seven thousand cases, per one hundred thousand cases in our two main, major zip codes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additional comments from the audience?
My name's Cara Jacob. I have two kids at Montgomery Elementary. And I, I just regarding the comment that you made, Mrs. Weiss, about navigating the pandemic. Mr. Lewis, I think, again, you've done a, a good job regarding the masking policy. But I will argue that when we saw Omicron hit and we all came back after the winter break, we saw numbers skyrocket. And I do think there was way too much of a delay in mandating masks in the junior high and high school. And if you look at the data from that week that we came back, there was a hundred and twelve percent increase in cases in the high school and a hundred percent in the junior high. And the case, the case increases at Green and all of the other elementary schools were nowhere near close to that. And they all had mandatory mask policies. So I do think while reacting to data in, is important, I also think when we're seeing these highly contagious variants that spread very quickly through our communities, it's important to be proactive or at least more quickly reactive to data. Because time is people, is infection, and it doesn't affect just people in the Sycamore community. It affects people in our county. It affects people in our hospitals. It affects our healthcare systems, and it happens fast. Nobody was prepared for this. Omicron hit hard. And so while reacting to data is important, also now we need to learn from what just happened, that reacting too late, we end up one of the top ten school districts in the state in terms of infections. And that's not good. We can do better. I know we can. We're Sycamore. We're smarter than that. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments relevant to policy EBEA? Any additional comments, discussion from the board? Okay, with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.